All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to see us this morning at the meeting of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we get started, just a little bit of housekeeping and for anyone who may be here to hear about the PZ 19-008 on Dawson Ridge Road, that docket item has been withdrawn. We will not be discussing that one today. If anyone has cell phones on them, please turn them to silent or vibrate so as not to interfere with the discussion. And if everyone would please rise with me and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Dunn, will you read the first docket? Oh, excuse me, I need to move into minutes first. Did everyone get a copy of the minutes? Do we have any changes or additions to note for the minutes?
I have a question. On page three of six, in section four, under the area that says Amy Alvey responded to the questions from the commissions, stated the future land use map as a guide and not as zoning regulations. Should that be plural or singular? And then the next...
Regulation is...singular is probably the right word, so take the S out.
Okay. And then the next sentence, which starts zoning regulation, just didn't make any sense.
Well, that's probably where the S should have gone. Zoning regulations allow for mini-storage or self-storage as part of the conditional use permit under C3.
Okay, there we go.
So zoning regulations plural and take out the S and allows and that's better grammar. Does that make sense now?
But yeah, I just went out. My comment was zoning regulations, which one? It was, and I don't know if that needs to be included. Your adding an S makes sense.
Well, she didn't actually say it, so that's why we didn't put it in.
Okay. Just in reading through those things, just didn't seem to come together.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Finney?
No.
Anyone else? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do this by voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
One abstention with that, please note.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. We also had January minutes in this package. Do we need to approve those as well?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, then we'll move on to the first docket item. Ms. Dunn, will you read the docket, please?
Yes. Docket PZ-19-006, application has been filed by JS Real Estate LLC for approval to amend a binding element attached to the approval of Ballard Woods Section 5. The property is located East Highway 22 at Ballard Woods Drive and Ballard Glen Parkway Smithfield. The zoning is R1 Residential District, AG1 Agricultural Residential District, and CO1 Conservation Residential District.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Alvey, before you get started, I would like to take a moment to welcome aboard our new member, Tom Elder. Everyone, please welcome Tom aboard. Remember, no good deed goes unpunished there. All right, Amy. Swear the staff, please, all staff, if you, please rise.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Read the docket. Oh, gotcha. All right. Good morning, Amy Alvey. I am Assistant Director for Oldham County Planning Development Services. This is your first docketed item. As Ms. Dunn stated, this is an application filed by JNS Real Estate for approval to amend a binding element attached to the approval of Ballard Woods Section 5. The land size is approximately 154 acres and is zoned AG1, R1, and CO1. This is an aerial view of the outline of Ballard Woods Section 5. This is the zoning that shows that it is R1, AG1, and CO1. Site history in your staff report, I listed all of the site history for Ballard Glen and Ballard Woods, but I'm not going to read all of that today, so just the part that's important, excuse me, that is Ballard Woods Section 5. So on July 24, 2018, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request by JS Real Estate for preliminary plan, a subdivision plan for 33 lots on approximately 54.3 acres to be known as Ballard Woods Section 5. And then on January 22 of 2019, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request by JS Real Estate for the revised preliminary subdivision plan, which included 87 lots to be known as Ballard Woods Section 5. This was the approved plan from January 22 outlining those lots. You'll see there was a connection here to Ballard Woods subdivision and then there's a connection here to Ballard Glen subdivision. The applicant is requesting to remove binding element number five that reads as follows, "A left-turn lane is warranted under the current conditions and shall be constructed before the first record plat." The applicant states that the applicant was not allotted fair or sufficient time to present rebuttal of staff left-turn lane requirement assertions whether prior to or during the planning commission meeting, and that comes from the applicant's justification statement. And the applicant also states that after review of the senior transportation engineer's technical memorandum from January 22, 2019 by their traffic engineer, Diane Zimmerman, that a left-turn lane is not warranted at this time. This is just a view of the curve area here in the entrance to Ballard Woods subdivision. This is the west view going back towards Ballardsville or LaGrange. This is the east view going towards Smithfield. And again, this is just the entrance of Ballard Vista Drive into Ballard Woods subdivision. So my presentation is pretty quick on this. So basically, the applicant is requesting to remove binding element number five that to read as folo, that read as follows, "A left-turn lane is warranted under the current conditions and shall be constructed before the first record plat." They are asking for that to be removed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Alvey? All right. Mr. Douglas.
Sure.
Ask any questions?
That's all good.
I was just going over, I guess, this paperwork and according to what the applicant stated was that the information that was presented to us was infactual on their document or our documents. Can you clarify that?
That may be clarification of the applicant, of what information that they felt was not factual.
Okay. But the traffic impact study that was provided to us at the time of the hearing, was the impact study done by the applicant?
Yes, it was.
Where it says, "Left-turn lane," okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Anything further? Any other questions for Ms. Alvey? All right, so for this particular docket item, we are going to depart from normal procedure of hearing that you've become accustomed to. Mr. Urban, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, this is like an appeal at the Board of Adjustments in a sense that we'll have the applicant give their statements and arguments and then you'll hear from staff, depending on what issues get brought up by the applicant. So rather than hearing all the staff report now, it's easier to just have the applicant give their testimony.
Very well. Mr. Baxter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street here in LaGrange. I am the attorney for the applicant. Mr. Chairman, if you want, I have Diane Zimmerman here this morning, Bob Bin Sand here this morning, and possibly Walt Chumall who may testify as part of our presentation and we can get them sworn now if that would be convenient.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing as a point of order, and I discussed this with Mr. Urban before we got started. This application, this appeal, for lack of a better term, is PZ 19-006. We were here in January on PZ 19-002 and just for the purposes of the record, I would ask that the record from the O2 case be incorporated by reference into the record here, just so that all of that information is also contained in this file.
Yes, sir. Mr. Combs?
Fine.
Do we need to have any motion making or any other acknowledgement in that space?
I don't think we have to make a motion necessarily, but it'd hurt, but put it on motion and then let the board prove it.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? This is a motion to incorporate the original docket number. We have a second. This is a motion to include...
We need a second, so...
Mr. Davis?
Okay.
Motion to include the original docket number into this docket item, which is 19-006. We'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Baxter, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And further, Mr. Chairman, I had listed exhibits that I was going to tender, but in light of that, I'm not going to tender a copy of the January 22, 2019 staff report because that's clearly already in the record from the O2 case. I have a copy of the transcript of the hearing that I would tender and also a copy of Ms. Zimmerman's resume that is also an exhibit to our presentation today. So our requested relief here is that there was a requirement, there was four binding elements that were included in the original staff report, and after the conclusion of the testimony in the case, a fifth binding element was added, which stated, "A left-turn lane is warranted under current conditions and shall be constructed before the first record plat," and we are seeking to have that binding element removed. So just a brief history for those of you who either may not remember or may not have been here, we were here on January the 22 and we were requested approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plat. So we had previously been approved for a 33-lot subdivision in July of last year with no turn lane requirement included as a binding element in that particular case. We came back in January, we increased the number of lots to 87, and that development was approved by a vote of 11, 0, and 1 with five binding elements. We had agreed on the record, and I can cite to the transcript where I made the statement, I believe it was at page 88, we agreed on the record to the four binding elements that were contained within the staff report. At the conclusion of the hearing, Mr. Urban was asked to summarize the decision before the commission, and he referenced the four proposed binding elements in the staff report and added the following, quote, "And then you know you've heard testimony from your staff that says turn lanes on Kentucky 22 are warranted." So you could put a binding element that a left-turn lane is warranted under current conditions and shall be constructed, and then you can set a time at which that might be, which considering that it's warranted today, I would say before the first record plat, and that information is contained in the transcript. Thereafter, Commissioner Falvey made binding element number five a condition of approval, stating that the applicant had agreed to the five binding elements, which again, I take issue with, and the transcript will indicate that we had agreed to the four that we were aware of. It should be noted, again, I'm noting on the record that we only agreed to those four that were listed. Mr. Urban, after Mr. Falvey made the motion, followed up again just to clarify, so the left-turn lane, one is a left-turn lane is warranted under current conditions and shall be constructed before the first record plat. Commissioner Falvey responded, "Are you making that recommendation?" And Mr. Urban responded, "That's what I would recommend you say for a binding element." So the issue that we have is that we were not on notice that there was going to be a left-turn lane required when we showed up here on January the 22. When we appeared on that day, Ms. Wall had provided a technical memorandum to you all and it was dated the day of the hearing, January 22 of 2019, and we had never received a copy of that. We didn't receive a copy of that until after the meeting. So we were in possession of an email from Jason Richardson with the Transportation Cabinet that said no turn lane was needed and there was reliance upon that email. Binding element number five was also not listed in the staff report. In fact, this is the staff report and what was testified to by Ms. Alvey, which is also in the transcript, it says, "A copy of the staff report," oh, I'm sorry, this is my notation, "a copy of the staff report was provided to us in advance of the hearing." And note number seven stated, "A traffic assessment was completed for the proposed development and determined, quote, 'Based upon the volume of traffic generated by Ballard Woods Section 5, for the year 2025, there will be a minor impact to the existing highway network. All approaches of the intersections evaluated will operate at level service C or better in 2025. Therefore, no mitigation is necessary for roadway capacity as a result of the development.'" It is significant to note that it says in there, "Will operate at level of service C." If you all will remember that it said that in the staff report. This is the email that Mr. Richardson of the Transportation Cabinet sent in response to whether or not they were going to pursue turn lanes. "We do not intend to pursue turn lanes at either locations since the increased traffic from Section 5 has minimal impact on the existing condition and volumes of this portion of Kentucky 22 are so low." That was the information that we had going into the hearing. This is the memorandum that was provided to you all on January 22 from Ms. Wall. It says, "A left-turn lane warrant analysis indicates that a left-turn lane is warranted on Kentucky 22 at Ballard Vista Drive for both the 2021 no-build, which note, that is going to be indicated later in an email from Ms. Wall to be a mistake, 2021, and build PM peak traffic volume, and at Ballard Glen Parkway for 2021 PM build." By email to the applicant, KTC stated the following, and this is again, Mr. Richardson's email, that says, "We looked at turn lane warrants and noted that a left turn is warranted in the existing condition at Ballard Vista and a left turn is warranted after the traffic from Section 5 is added about Ballard Glen. We do not intend to pursue turn lanes at either locations since the increased volume or the increased traffic from Section 5 has minimal impact on the existing condition and volumes on this portion of Kentucky 22 are so low." Ms. Wall's memorandum went on to state, to discuss the subdivision regulation 5.3.C, 6.C., which is quoted therein and which we're going to discuss in a little more detail later, but it says, "The developer shall obtain and dedicate sufficient right-of-way and construct turning lanes as necessary to maintain the capacity of existing streets." Please note the word "maintain" the capacity of existing streets. Turning lanes are required whenever a proposed subdivision or additional section of an existing subdivision generates an ADT of 1,000 vehicles or greater and are approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and/or county engineer. When the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and/or county engineer determine that a turning lane is desirable, the Kentucky Department of Transportation's design and construction standards will be utilized." And then Ms. Wall inserted, "The 2025 build ADT for Ballard Vista Drive is 1,434 and Ballard Glen Parkway is 1,625." Again, please note, the first we heard of this was when she got up before you all and gave a staff report on January the 22. This was her testimony. She says, "However, the state had conversations with the applicant by email regarding the need for those left-turn lanes. They stated they had looked at a left-turn warrants and noted that a left turn is warranted in the existing condition of Ballard Vista," and that is directly from the transcript at page 14. There was no other testimony that was presented to you all from staff or anyone else regarding any other issues that formed the basis to require a turn lane. Ms. Wall testified, her testimony was echoed by Mr. Silhman and then summarized by Mr. Urban as the reason for the binding element number five and why it was added to the four existing binding elements. So this is what she testified to, that she looked at this email from Mr. Richardson and that's what she relied upon in saying that we needed to have a left-turn lane. So from our perspective, we didn't know this was coming. And after this happened, to understand why it happened, we went back to KYTC and to Ms. Wall to try to sort out how we got to this point. Since we didn't know that it was coming, it was not something that we were prepared to address when we were here in January. This is an email that was sent by our traffic engineer to Ms. Wall asking for clarification. And the first part refers to the typo about 2021 or 2025, and the second asks if she is quoting the text from Mr. Richardson's email and whether or not that she verified with him that the left-turn lane is warranted in the existing conditions. Ms. Wall responded and said, "Yes, I'm sorry, that is a typo. Should have been 2025, not 2021. Your previous study was 2021. I didn't discuss with Jason. The quoted statement is from an email between you and KYTC that was forwarded to you." We sent an email to Mr. Richardson, "Please review the statement below. We looked at the turn lane warrants and noted that a left turn is warranted in the existing condition at Ballard Vista and a left turn lane is warranted after traffic from Section 5 is added to Ballard Glen. Did you mean to say existing using figure two or no-build, figure three?" And Ms. Zimmerman sent him back the information that he had reviewed previously just for his convenience. And he responded, "2025 no-build has the warranted left-turn lane. No turn lanes are warranted based upon the 2018 existing volumes." This was the chart that Ms. Zimmerman generated after having conversations and after reviewing the information after the meeting. So this shows that based upon her information that a left-turn lane is not warranted in the existing conditions. And she's going to get up and talk a little bit about what she has done to try to verify all this and to explain the issues that are presented. So I'm going to get her up here if I could.
Good morning, Diane Zimmerman, 12803 High Meadows Pike Prospect 40059. So I want to spend some time this morning discussing auxiliary lanes, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's procedures and details for when and why they would require left-turn lanes. This comes from their Highway Design Manual, which has been dated March of 2017 is the current version, and we're looking at chapter 902, which is on intersections. These are the actual pages from that document and I'm going to walk through them one section at a time. We start at 902.10, which is their definition of what is an auxiliary lane and why would we use it. An auxiliary lane is the section of roadway which is adjacent to the through lanes that is used for a speed change, left or right turning lanes, storage, weaving maneuvers, truck climbing lanes, and there can be some other purposes. Directly below this section becomes this paragraph that states, "Auxiliary lanes may be added to improve the safety and capacity of an intersection." So those are going to be the primary reasons that we evaluate when, and when I say "we," I mean transportation engineers, evaluate whether or not an auxiliary lane is appropriate. It goes on to say, and I've added the emphasis here, "Warrants for the use of an auxiliary lane cannot be stated definitely," meaning there is engineering judgment that comes into play here, there may be factors that one outweighs another, and so therefore there is no "shall" language, there is no such thing as a warrant for a left-turn lane in the state of Kentucky. Many factors should be considered, such as the speed, traffic volumes, percentage of trucks, capacity, type of highway, availability of right-of-way, the service provided, and the arrangement and frequency of the intersections along the road. 902.11 talks about left-turn lanes as opposed to right, there's another section on right-turn lanes. These are all the points that are listed. I've graded out the two that really do not apply. At an unsignalized intersection, left-turn lane should be considered when traffic is not under stop control at an unsignalized intersection. The intersection of Kentucky 22 and Ballard Vista is an unsignalized intersection. And then the last one says, "Whenever practical, left-turning traffic should be removed from the through lanes for the safety, operational, or other considerations. Therefore, provisions of left-turn, such as left-turn lanes, have widespread application." For how to evaluate the need for a left-turn lane, section 902.11.3, Left-Turn Lane Evaluations. Figures 1 and 2 are provided to aid, aid, not warrant, but aid in the evaluating the need for left-turn lanes. As shown in figure 1, if the intersection of the advancing and opposing volumes is to the right of the corresponding percentage of left turns in the advancing volumes, then there is a greater than 1% chance, 1% chance, that the advancing vehicle arrives when the intersection is blocked by a turning vehicle. So let's look at these figures. Figure 1 is for low-speed roads, which is a speed when the posted speed limit is 45 miles an hour or less. Figure 2 is the one that will apply to this situation where the speed is greater than 45 miles an hour. And then I have plopped this red dot on here for purposes of conversation today. That red dot represents 200 advancing vehicles and 150 opposing vehicles with 50 left-turn lanes, that are left-turning vehicles. That means that the red dot is to the left of the curve and not to the right, and so in this, for that data, a left-turn lane would not be advised. At the bottom of this figure, and it doesn't show up great on the slide, there is the calculation of how these curves should be applied. And so what is critical to understand is what we're going to look at next is a spreadsheet that was developed by the Kentucky Transportation Center and under contract to the Transportation Cabinet, where they took the data and equations at the bottom and put it into a spreadsheet to make it significantly more user-friendly and to develop a curve for what if you have 3% left turns, so that you're not trying to interpolate between the curves. So when we looked at our definition of when should we apply, what are the criteria? The first one, the first word in that paragraph was safety. So as an engineer, how do I evaluate whether or not there's a safety condition? I pulled the crash data from the Kentucky State Police. Since the intersection of Ballard Vista Drive opened, the data only goes back to 2009. So for the past 10 years, there has been one crash at this intersection, one crash in 10 years. The Kentucky Transportation Center has created a methodology that we can compare how the crashes at one location compare to crashes throughout the state. So they devised this calculation for crash rate, which compares the crash rate for a three-year period to all state roads in Kentucky. And so at this location in the past three years, there has been that one crash. The crash rate would be calculated at this location as compared to the volume as 2.1. When I compare the 2.1 at the calculated critical crash rate to the statewide average, I'm going all the way to the far right in the green box, CCRF, Critical Crash Rate Factor. If that number is greater than 1, the location can be considered a high crash rate. This location is 0.07, significantly less than 1. This indicates there is not a safety issue that should be mitigated at this location. The capacity definition, I've taken this definition directly from the Highway Capacity Manual, the sixth edition, A Guide for Mobility Analysis. This is, document is produced by the Transportation Research Board and we're on a version that is currently published in 2016. "The capacity of a facility is the maximum hourly rate at which persons or vehicles can reasonably be expected to traverse a point or a uniform section of lane or roadway given in a given time period under prevailing road, traffic, and control conditions." So this is the numerical calculation of how many vehicles can go through this intersection. And that's all well and good, right? If I give you a number, that's fine, but what does that number mean? How do we apply that number? So the Transportation Research Board has developed Level of Service, which is a quantitative stratification of the performance measured, and for unsignalized intersections, we're discussing delay that is experienced at the intersection. It's on a scale from A to F, where A represents the best operating condition from the traveler's perspective and F is the worst. And again, how does that relate? So this page is directly from the traffic impact study that was presented in January, Kentucky 22 at Ballard Vista Drive. Kentucky 22 at Ballard Vista Drive. For purposes of today's discussion, we are only discussing the Kentucky 22 eastbound left movement. So we have, today it's operating at level service A with an average delay of 7.9 seconds. When the development is built, it's going to operate at level service A with 8.1 seconds of delay. So adding of the additional houses in this development is going to add 2/10 of a second in delay for left turning vehicles. The PM peak hour, it is currently operating at level service A, 7.5 seconds of delay. And we add all of the additional traffic that is projected in the area, we again add 2/10 of a second. So why is this important? Because the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 7, Roadway Capacity Standards, says for all rural roads, the very bottom section is where I'm reading, for all other rural roads in Oldham County, level of service C and above shall be considered acceptable level of service. And level of D shall be considered unacceptable unless mitigation is provided. So again, we were at level service A, which is the best, and it is above level service C. Therefore, no mitigation should be required at this intersection. Barry did show this chart, but again, I want to show and kind of walk through it. That the left turning volume is 41, the advancing volume is 244, the opposing volume is 104. You can clearly see that the red dot is to the left of it. This chart does say warranted. This is, the chart, the spreadsheet itself has not been updated to match the current Highway Design Manual, where they have dropped the use of the word warranted. They have not updated the spreadsheet to match. And you will notice at the bottom of this spreadsheet, it says, this spreadsheet is intended to supplement guidance provided in the policy outlined in the Highway Design Manual. So the design manual takes precedent over what is presented on, as far as the wording on this chart. And as far as the subdivision regs requirement of greater than 1,000 ADT, I went back and pulled every traffic impact study I've worked on in Oldham County, and this is the list of the ones in Oldham County and the date of the traffic impact study and the ADT. And so here are nine examples of locations with an ADT greater than 1,000 where the Planning Commission did not require left turn lanes to be constructed as part of it. So in my opinion, this feels like an arbitrary application of this section of the subdivision regs.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bensan is going to get up now and, and just explain something, some things about the geometry of the roadway and, and the calculation of what the cost would be to put in a left turn lane at this location.
He's a little old school. He doesn't know how to do counting.
Full deal.
Good morning. Thanks, Barry. Okay, I want to talk to you a little bit today about the geometry that we have with the existing curve and entrance at Ballard Woods and about, Ballard Vista Drive and Kentucky Highway 22. The original construction plans, which I have in my hand here, were prepared and dated in 1938. Okay? The existing curve radius that we have in the, in the curve out on Highway 22 is 635 feet. Today, the absolute minimum radius for a 55 mile an hour speed limit in this curve would be 1,190 feet. That's twice what has been designed in 1938 and constructed. Okay? So go back to your high school geometry and just recall that the greater the radius, the flatter the curve. The information that I just presented to you is listed in Exhibit 700.02 from the Kentucky Highway Transportation Cabinet.
Can you turn that about?
Okay, sorry. I have it circled in red where it clearly shows that the design speed is 55 miles an hour, the, for a super elevation of 4%. Most high-speed highway roads are constructed with super elevation. That's what we have out there is 4%. And the, the minimum, not recommended, but the minimum radius would be 1,190 feet. So just as a sidelight, I would suggest to you, I have ridden and driven in some cars that are of that era, and I can promise you, if you went around that curve at 55 miles an hour in one of those cars, it would be like an amusement park ride. It's, it is a, it is a tight curve. The, the existing geometry that is out there and all the conditions that we have would make it prohibitively expensive to install a left turn lane. All right, let's go back in history a little bit again. The Ballard Woods entrance was originally approved in 2002.
Sorry. You're going to have to get us those exhibits, so just put it on top of that one.
Yeah, I'll hold on to them. Okay. All right, sorry. So the Ballard Woods original entrance was approved in 2002. And at that time, the south bank, which is the side over here, was cleared of vegetation and a small amount of graining occurred in the right of way. The road culverts, there's a culvert here, there's a road culvert here, were lengthened on both sides of the entrance. And this entrance was not constructed until these improvements were made and the Highway Department inspected the work and signed off on it. This is a brochure that is put out by the Federal Highway Administration. It gives the two reasons that we would build a left turn lane. They're exactly the same as what Ms. Zimmerman presented to you that comes from the Highway Department. First of all, it is to remove stop vehicles from through traffic. Left turn lanes reduce crashes by an average of 50%. We have little or no history on this site of accidents since 19, or since 2002. The one reported accident that Ms. Zimmerman made reference to was actually due to a distracted driver. This driver indicated in the police report that he was distracted and it wasn't a lack of stopping sight distance. So I would say that if we're going to reduce something by 50%, it's, it's hard to reduce one or you could say zero by 50% because 50% of zero is still zero. The second reason from the FHWA recommendation for a left turn lane is to increase the capacity of the roadway. Again, Ms. Zimmerman addressed this, but we, we have a level of service of A at the intersection. The service level A will continue throughout the buildout of this development, and a left turn lane cannot increase the capacity at this site based on the current and projected traffic volumes that we have. Talk a little bit about sight distance. This is an email from CWC Moore with the Kentucky Highway Transportation Cabinet. I met with him and Mr. Jason Richardson, who is his boss, on Friday at the site. We measured 1,020 feet of sight distance for traffic heading west and 585 feet of sight distance for vehicles that are approaching the intersection. This procedure was based on section 9, 902.8 of the Kentucky Transportation Design Manual. And we actually measured the eastbound approach twice, came up with the exact same result of 585 feet because we knew this was going to be a controversial issue. Amy's already showed these, but I'm going to kind of put these up here. This is the view from Ballard Vista Drive looking to the east. And this is a view from Ballard Vista Drive looking back towards Ballardville, which is to the west. I have prepared a preliminary cost estimate. This is a rough drawing, but it is what I have based my quantities and dimensions on in order to come up with this estimate. It's not a, a full-blown set of plans because a turning lane set of plans would be about 10 pages to meet all the requirements that are in place by the Highway Department. So this is the preliminary cost estimate. I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but when you add up the 14 items, you come up with approximately $576,000. If you put in a 10% contingency, that would be almost another $60,000. So we're looking at approximately $633,000 to construct this left turn lane. And in my opinion, that's a, that's a prohibitive cost. You may be presented with some questions about safety at this site in this hearing. If you do, I'm going to say that most of these issues can be addressed by maintenance to return the site to the conditions that existed in 2002 when we installed the initial entrance. This can be done efficiently and economically by pruning the existing tree, clearing the bank of vegetation, and establishing a ground cover of ivy that would help prevent future growth of vegetation. A second option would be the reduction of the speed limit to 45 miles an hour. We have approached the Highway Department about a speed reduction. I was told by Mr. Kenny Carrico from the Highway Department that they would not do that because there, there is no safety concern at this particular intersection. And that's based on the lack of crash data that's available. That concludes my presentation.
Before you sit down.
Yes.
When you got up here, you didn't tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry. Bob Bensan of Bensan Engineering, 306 West Jefferson, La Graines, 400031.
And Bob, you are a licensed professional engineer?
That's correct.
Okay. Licensed by the state of Kentucky, correct?
That's correct. Land surveyors.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I would tender the exhibits that Mr. Bensan went through as part of our
So we've heard a little bit about your subdivision regulations and the application of those regulations to this particular situation. And Ms. Zimmerman went through this part of section 7.2 with you when she showed you 7.2, Section B. And this just tells you what the purposes of the roadway capacity standard is, which is set, set out in section 7.2. And it says, the purposes of the road capacity standards are to maintain an acceptable level of road services as defined in Part B of this section while allowing new development to occur, to evaluate proposed development impact on existing roads, and to identify future road improvement needs in Oldham County. Section B, the next section, which Ms. Zimmerman went over with you, and she pointed particular attention to the things that I have highlighted, which is that for all other roads in Oldham County, in order to determine whether or not mitigation would be required, you have to have level of service C or above. And if that is the case, mitigation is not required. If you have level of service D or below, it's unacceptable unless you give mitigation. A left turn lane by definition is going to be considered mitigation. Now you will remember that when Ms. Zimmerman stood up here, she showed you a chart that showed the level of service at this intersection is level of service A today and will be level of service A when this development is completed. So there is no change in the level of service at this intersection based upon the 87 lots that, that were proposed in January of 2019. Further down in that, there is a, there's a criteria for approving or denying a subdivision. And in particular, we look at section two that says, a proposed development may be denied if the traffic impact study approved by the commission's traffic engineer indicates that a loss of ser, or level of service at the end of each development year or phase for an existing proposed roads and intersections is unacceptable as defined in Part B of this section. So we just went over Part B's definition. And in this particular case, there is no loss of service at this intersection despite having 87 new homes constructed in this development. So from our perspective, there is not mitigation required under section 7.2 of the subdivision regulations. And as Mr. Bensan testified, in order to provide this unnecessary mitigation, it's going to cost about $630,000 to build something that is not required by the regulations. In addition, in Ms. Wall's presentation, she referred to the subdivision regulation 5.3.1C, 1.6.1C, which talks about turning lanes. And it says, the developer shall obtain and dedicate sufficient right of way and construct turning lanes as necessary to maintain the capacity of existing streets. Turning lanes are required whenever a proposed subdivision, and the operative word here is "or," an additional section of an existing subdivision generates ADT of 1,000 vehicles or greater and are approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and/or the county engineer. So note in that regulation, it says "or," and then later it says "and/or." It doesn't say "and/or" an additional section up in the, in the first part. So Ms. Wall testified, I had some discussions with Jim in looking at the, Jim Urban about the interpretation of the regs. And the way it's interpreted, it, it would be an overall, if you add up the sections of the subdivision, generate over 1,000 vehicles, not just each section, but if you did that, you'd have each section that would be less than 1,000, and a left turn lane would never be triggered, when in reality, a left turn lane would be required because of the traffic volume. And Mr. Urban added, at some point, the volumes are there to support the decision to put in left turn lanes, and that's in the transcript at page 15. If you read that regulation, it says, turning lanes are required whenever a proposed subdivision or an additional section of an existing subdivision generates an ADT of 1,000 vehicles or greater. Ballard Woods Section 5 generates about 870 ADT, that's 10 car trips per household per day, and it's less than the 1,000-vehicle threshold. So at the, at the hearing, there was discussion about whether this development is a new subdivision or an additional section of an existing subdivision. In fact, some of the neighbors stood up and complained and didn't want Ballard Woods Section 5 to be named Ballard Woods, if you all remember. And they were saying that they weren't going to take this new section into the Ballard Woods Homeowners Association, and that was actually a big point of contention at the hearing. The, the, the point is that if the development was named the Smith subdivision and it was being developed by John Smith, the regulation is clear that, that that development could not be required to put in a turn lane. That's the way the regulation reads, and it's the plain reading of the regulation. And if the regulation was supposed to be applied some other way, it should say something different. But what it says is "or," and, and that is the operative word in that particular part of the regulation. So this is just me again pointing that out. You've got "and/or" in parts of that regulation that the author wrote and "or" that was written in, in this particular part of this regulation. So that gets us to why, if, if this application is, were to be correct, that you can add them all up and you get to apply that and then say, okay, now you've reached this threshold and therefore you have to put in a turn lane. Why is it that we haven't had to do that in these subdivisions? These are prior approvals of subdivisions where the ADT exceeded 1,000 and turn lanes were not required, including Ballard Woods Section 5. We would have reached that threshold in July of 2018, and, and there was no requirement of a turn lane when, when Ballard Woods Section 5 was originally approved. So when we come back and get it revised, now we've added houses even though we were over the ADT before, and now we have to have a turn lane. So from our perspective, we had no mention of a turn lane requirement in July of 2018. There was no mention of a turn lane when we came to TRC in December. There was a staff report that we received in advance of the hearing that indicated no mitigation was necessary. And prior to that January 22 meeting, we were in possession of an email from Mr. Richardson that said that no turn lane was required. Nobody, prior to January 22nd, when we got here, told us that it was going to be necessary to construct a turn lane. So in Ms. Wall's letter, we didn't get that either. I didn't get that letter until after the meeting. It wa, I, I got a copy of it after the meeting when we were here on January the 22nd. And Mr. Siliman got up and testified, and he echoed Ms. Wall's opinion about the fact that the ADT required a turn lane. There was no, no issues of safety were raised in his testimony, and his testimony is in the transcript. I believe it is at page 16. And he talks about what Ms. Wall had said, and he And he talks about what Ms. Wall had said, and he indicates that in his opinion, based upon the ADT, that a turn lane is necessary at that point. But that opinion was not provided to us before the hearing, and it was never reduced to writing. So we're asking that binding element number five be removed. And we're asking because KYTC said, "No turn lane is needed at present," because the staff's recommendation for construction of a turn lane is based upon an error in Mr. Richardson's email that he has acknowledged, and that that email was the sole basis for the recommendation of Ms. Wall and the statements made thereafter in summarizing whether or not turn lanes were necessary at the time, when Mr. Urban summarized what was necessary for binding element number five. And we have presented evidence today that even if those other issues were presented, which they weren't, it was solely based upon ADT, but if safety, sight lines, any of those things were presented, that those criteria don't rise to the level of requiring a turn lane at this location either. So from the perspective of the applicant, if you apply your regulations, there is not a basis to require this left turn lane. It shouldn't have been required in January. That binding element should be removed. And since public safety is not being impacted, and the sworn testimony is that there is no impact on public safety, to require the construction of a turn lane at excess cost of $630,000 with no benefit is merely punitive, and there is no reason to have to have a turn lane at this particular location. I conclude, again, that's basically our case. We certainly will answer any questions that you all will have at any point. I know that there's going to be some statements made up here that I may have questions of staff when they get up. But from our perspective, again, there's no safety concern that requires this turning lane. The regulations don't require this turning lane. The ADT doesn't support having a turning lane, and we should not be required to construct a turning lane at this particular location. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Backstrom. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If you wish to speak in favor of the application, please approach. All right. There being none, we'll move into presentation from staff.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the county has a contract with Neil Schaefer as our traffic consultants, and typically, we see Paula Wall here. She was not able to make this meeting. So Karen Mohammed is here on behalf of Neil Schaefer. And I know that complicates things a little bit. We don't have direct testimony from Paula Wall, but we did talk, and she does have a prepared document. But I think first, calling the county engineer.
County engineer.
Jim Silliman, county engineer of 100 West Jefferson Street, La Grange, Kentucky.
Is this yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this is the point of order. The clock, I think that's our time remaining, so we need to get the clock reset.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backstrom.
I don't think we need 50, but...
You've seen this section from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Highway Design Guidance Manual. Earlier, I listed or showed it also, just to make a couple additional or supplemental points. And I think Karen's going to refer to it as well. When they were talking about the left turn lanes, I'll put the ellipsis on the first one, because as Diane mentioned, that first statement's not relevant to any of this. However, the second statement mentions, "Left turn lanes should be considered when traffic is not under stop control at unsignalized intersections." Excuse me. This is an unsignalized intersection, so that's this one. We should be considering a left turn lane, as stated here. The second, or the third bullet, actually, is, "Capacity analysis should be used to evaluate the need for left turn lanes at stop-controlled approaches of unsignalized intersections." So the capacity analysis is all the terms you've been hearing about Level of Service A, B, and C. When we read this statement, it says that that Level of Service should be used when you're considering a stop-controlled intersection. So this is not a stop-controlled intersection, and therefore, I'm not sure that applies. It's not relevant in this case. Third, "Whenever practical left-turning traffic should be removed from the through lanes for safety, operational, or other considerations. Therefore, provisions for left turns such as left turn lanes have a widespread application." And then it goes on to say, mentions, "Figures 1 and 2 are provided to aid in evaluating the need for left turn lanes." And I've just, for your record, the blue italic are my comments. The black text is what's actually in the manual. And I just noted that the figures that were in the original traffic study by Ms. Zimmerman indicated that the build and the no-build conditions did warrant left turn lanes. And "warrant" was the word that's been used because it's in the figure. It was used throughout the report. If that's changed to "advised," say "advised." Secondly, the supplemental figure that was provided for the 2018 condition, that's where it did not warrant or advise the left turn condition. I want to highlight the safety considerations. And the engineering department went out to investigate the curve specifically and in the field. When we're reviewing the stopping sight distance, the stopping sight distance is a characteristic or a function that's referenced in the ASHTO manual. It's the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials as a design standard for the highways. The stopping sight distance is a culmination of the reaction time of a driver and their ability to stop their vehicle. So over time, empirical analysis has concluded on certain distances for each speed. So at 55 miles an hour, which this section of the road is signed at, 490 feet is the ASHTO required stopping sight distance. What the engineering department did was, on a nice, clear day, we made a mark on the pavement 495 feet away from the block on the top is pointing to where a left turn vehicle is sitting in the turn, in the eastbound lane, as if they're going, they're stopped, and they're going to turn left in the subdivision. It's one of our white Ford Rangers. And we came back 490 feet away from that, where the stopping sight distance should be by the ASHTO standards, and there's no sight of that truck at all around the curve. So we proceeded, we started walking until we could start seeing that vehicle. And it's really not apparent on the picture, but I've got an arrow pointing to where you can begin to see the corner of the vehicle. In the field, you could. But again, that's just the rear corner of the vehicle coming into view. And that was at 300 feet. So 300 feet is the rough stopping sight distance that is actual in the field. And that's consistent with about 40 miles per hour in the ASHTO standards. Mr. Backstrom referenced the email from KYTC. And just to clarify, I spoke with KYTC about that email, and there was, he was asserting that the email stated that existing conditions warranted the left turn lane. KYTC admitted that that should have said "build and no-build condition." It wasn't existing, so we're in agreement on that. But again, it does warrant or advise, based on the graphs that were provided by the traffic impact study by the applicant's engineer, it does warrant a left turn lane by volumes for the no-build condition in 2025 and for the build condition, of course, in 2025. Just to reiterate, the capacity analysis does not appear to be applicable. So when we're talking about Level of Service A, B, C, D, that was for stop-controlled intersections, that that was recommended to be utilized. When the engineering department looked at collision data, I think we went to a different source. We had data from 2015 to present. There was one incident reported in 2018. It was described as a rear-end collision on dry pavement, clear weather, daylight conditions, involving two motor vehicles. So that appears to be the condition we're concerned with for safety, is a rear-end collision for someone sitting in that turn. As I showed you in the pictures, the designed stopping sight distance for 55 miles an hour is 495 feet. The actual, we measured, was 300 feet, which is appropriate for 40 miles an hour, and it's 200 feet or more, significantly less than what's required. So, you know, as I said, it has indicated the traffic volumes as considered as a warrant for the future turn lane. It's advised for the future condition. However, the stopping sight distance, and it shows concern for it now, or need for That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silliman.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Mohammed, are you up next?
My name is Karen Mohammed. I'm at 200 Whittington Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky. I'm transportation engineer with Neil Schaefer, and I'm going to read into record a technical memorandum prepared by Paula Wall dated April 23rd for the traffic review of Ballard Wood subdivision, Section 5, Kentucky 22, binding element 5, left turn lane requirement. Following statements are provided in regard to the applicant's request to eliminate binding element number 5, which states, "A left turn lane is warranted under current conditions and shall be constructed before the first record plat." Number one, based on the traffic assessment review for the June-July 2018 Ballard Wood Section 5 preliminary subdivision plan, a condition of approval was applied requiring further traffic analysis prior to construction approval. During the July 24, 2018, public hearing, specific comments were made regarding the potential need for left turn on Kentucky 22 at Ballard Vista Drive and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet comments indicating that a full traffic impact study would be required prior to final approval. Number two, at the December 18, 2018, TRC meeting for the revised preliminary subdivision plan of Ballard Wood Section 5, the following traffic review comments were made. Bullet number one, based on the traffic review of the July 2018 Ballard Wood Section 5 submittal, a condition of approval was applied requiring further traffic analysis. Given Kentucky Transportation Cabinet comments, this plan revision, with increase in lots, a traffic study is required. Bullet two, the full scope of the traffic study shall be coordinated and confirmed with Oldham County and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, if necessary, prior to conducting and completing the analysis. Any previous data analysis, such as the Ballard Glen Traffic Study and the Ballard Wood Section 5 dated July 2018, traffic assessments need to be considered in determining scope. Item three, a traffic study prepared by Diane B. Zimmerman dated December 24, 2018, was submitted to Oldham County. It should be noted that this first edition of the traffic study did not include any left turn lane analysis, as previously discussed. Following full review, comments dated January 9, 2019, were provided, and revised traffic studies dated January 10, 2019, and January 17, 2019, were submitted. Item four, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Highway Design Guidance Manual dated March 2017 states the following regarding auxiliary lanes, including left turn lanes, applicable to this case. Bullet one, auxiliary lanes may be added to improve the safety and capacity of an intersection. Warrants for the use of auxiliary lanes cannot be stated definitely. Many factors should be considered, such as speeds, traffic volumes, percentage of trucks, capacity, type of highway, availability of right-of-way, services provided, and the arrangement and frequency of intersections. Bullet two, for unsignalized intersections, left turn lane should be considered when traffic is not under stop control at the unsignalized intersection. Capacity analysis should be used to evaluate the need for left turn lanes at stop-controlled approaches of the unsignalized intersections. Whenever practical left-turning traffic should be removed from the through lanes for safety, operational, and other considerations. Therefore, provisions for left turn lanes, such as left turn lanes, have widespread application. Using the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Auxiliary Lane Analysis Tool, as stated in the traffic study, the left turn lane warrant analysis indicated that a left turn lane warrant is satisfied for Kentucky 22 at Ballard Vista Drive for both the 2025 no-build and the 2025 build PM peak traffic volumes. The Oldham County Subdivision Regulation, Section 5.3(c)(6(c) states the following, "Turning lanes, the developer shall obtain and dedicate sufficient right-of-way and construct turning lanes as necessary to maintain the capacity of the existing streets. Turn lanes are required whenever a proposed subdivision or an additional section of an existing subdivision generates an ADT of 1,000 vehicles or greater and are approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and/or county engineer. When the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and/or county engineer determine that a turn lane, turning lane is desirable, the Kentucky Department of Transportation's Design and Construction standards shall be utilized." Existing Ballard Wood subdivision, 105 lots, generates an ADT of 1,088 vehicles for Ballard Vista Drive, which exceeds the above 1,000-vehicle threshold. The 2025 ADT for Ballard Vista Drive is 1,434, as stated in the traffic study. The county engineer will also address the determination regarding Kentucky 22 left turn lanes.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. So before you leave, if you would, please, so this content will be subject to cross-examination. Is this content that you concur with as well?
Yes.
All right. And you, did we get her qualifications on the front side of this? Would you please tell us what your professional licensure and so forth is?
Sure. I am a degree in engineer, and I'm a professional traffic operations engineer.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Don't go into too many questions, because you want to finish.
Thank you. Beg your pardon. All right. All right. Further from staff, and do we have anything additional from staff? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just have a point of order here. I know we kind of went out of our little realm of what we normally do. We didn't have an opportunity, the planning commission, to ask questions to the applicant. And then we went right into the opposing presentation, so...
Understand. So I'll beg your patience for a little bit here. We're going to collect input from anyone who may be opposed to this application, and then we'll launch into the question stage.
Okay. So are we going to extend our time for the time to ask questions for everyone? Because...
That is within our discretion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We will now move into questions and testimony from those. Amy?
Anybody else?
Anybody that wants to speak in?
First, you have to have anybody else speaking against the application.
Well, we just closed the staff piece of this discussion, though, right? And we're going to move into the piece for those who are questioning or in opposition to, correct?
Okay.
Is that where?
Sure. It's a little different.
It is.
But it's the applicant and those in favor, the opposing viewpoints, if you will, and those opposing. And so, yes.
So what you would call that is, so for those, anyone who has questions or wishes to provide opposition testimony.
Now's the time.
Correct? Now is the time, as Mr. Urban says. Does anybody wish to provide additional input from an opposing standpoint? Please approach.
You tell me so I can tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Erin Gilfoyle. I live at 4048 Ballard Woods Drive in Ballard Wood subdivision. Lived there for three years. And today, I'm a homeowner, as well as on the board for the Homeowners Association. So I want to bring forward some information as far as a person... information as far as a person who drives this on a daily basis so that you're well aware of the situation. Okay? Before I start, I want to go back a little bit of history and, and slow down. You've seen a lot of information today, and I want to make sure it's very clear and very concise what you've heard and, and the point that I'd like to make. First off, we were here on January the 22nd. You, you heard good oppositions from myself, from Brian Jones, another homeowner, from Brett Sheddler, from another owner. So there, there was certainly good discussion why we believe there should be a left hand turn lane. So that, that was in opposition of what Mr. Baxter said. So I want to make that very clear. That this, this was an opportunity to hear our voice. It was heard, and it was voted upon in clear, in clear conscience. To start with, let's look at these details once more. Thank you very much. As we've heard today and as I've learned in, in just my personal study, the Highway Design Manual has very explicit directions on how this goes. There are four basic elements that should be considered in the design. What we've, what's surprising, we really haven't talked about are the physical elements in detail. Okay? But there are four listed. The human factors, the traffic movement considerations, which is the design discussion that, that we've had, the physical elements, and the economic factors. I'm going to draw attention and specific focus to the physical elements as well as those traffic moving considerations. Okay? And you, and we need to include all of that data in making a sound decision. So it's very important that we include that. So here's a picture of the intersection of Highway 22. This is a different view. This is an aerial view. Just to orient yourself today, if you're coming from the courthouse, you'll go south on 53, say three or four miles. It will then curve to the east. You can go to Highway 22. You're, you're passing Ballard Woods Fire Department. You're passing the salt in Light Church. And then you'll come up to this curve that we've discussed at the entrance, the peak, you know, right at the peak of that curve is our entrance to Ballard Woods subdivision. Here is a close up of that view. I'll show you today, as you were to drive up. On the right, you'll see a lot. You'll see the two entrances on kind of a turnaround, and then also a house along with an embankment in trees and bushes right there at that entrance. Here is an aerial view of this curve. And I, and I like this piece because it really shows that this is not a straightaway. It's even close to a 90 degree angle, maybe, maybe 130, 130 degrees or so. So that is very applicable when we talk about those, those intersections. And it's surprising to me in the current status that we don't have a turn lane today, even regardless of this growth that we're going to talk about on Ballard Woods 5 and Ballard Glen. Okay? I'm going to show video here shortly as if you were the driver, because I think that is so important as a person, again, as I drive this on a daily basis in and out, that you see all the signage that we have. When you come up, you will see two left curve indicators on the left hand side. Picture on the left, you will see a curve sign that says, "Slow down to 45 miles per hour." Okay? We've talked about, hey, this is a 55 mile per hour road. Well, at this curve, we're supposed to be at 45 miles per hour. Now, people fly around that curve, as you can imagine, but that is a posted sign. This is a very rural road. You can see the bumpers, bumper lines on the right hand side that will indicate if you get too far over, but there's no wiggle room. There's no way to pass a car or even get close to, to missing one if you have an, have an issue. The right picture, that is if you are sitting in the turn, sitting at the entrance of Ballard Vista Drive, and you were to look left. Now, this is my morning view. There were four cars coming around that curve, two curves actually, if you look at it. And that's very frequent. I do wait to, to come out of that neighborhood in the morning, no doubt. And then I do wait when, as I turn in, in the afternoon to come home. So there are two more curves. So when we talk about sight distance, the, pay attention to these markers, whether or not you can see those indicator, those indicator signs. As you approach the line, as you approach the entrance, the line of sight around this curve is obstructed. Okay? So I'm coming up to the curve. If you look at the picture there on the left, you will see trees on your right. There are trees, there are bushes. It is a six foot embankment. And that's why that curve is there. Certainly, they didn't, they didn't cut the road straight through is because of that hill. Okay? That's the reason for it. And then as you approach, you will come to, and I typically do is a rolling stop. I will nearly have to slow down to at least five miles per hour before I can take that left hand turn. Okay? And that's just so I can see around the curve. And it is worse, of course, during rain, during foggy conditions in the morning, not on a clear and nice day like it was today from the day I took the picture. Okay? So I know we've seen these pictures before, but again, we really need to slow down and take the time to understand, when we talk about safety, you know there is concern with the safety of this road. There's unequivocally, no doubt, there's a concern. I'd like to show you a video, and if I can.
Ms. Guilfoyle, I'd like to encourage you to remember, we have others who are sworn to provide testimony. Please reserve time for them as well.
Okay. No problem. If I could, I apologize, I don't have this on our drive, but can I flip to, yes, perfect.
Counsel, is this testimony that we'll need to retain? Is this evidence?
Yes, she can take it up.
Make arrangements to provide that to staff?
It's video.
Thank you.
We're going to start at the beginning. There's the right curve, the 45 mile per hour sign, two left signals, a car I've just now seen turn, coming the opposite direction, and then I'll take a left and turn again. Let me back up and, and slow this down once more. Important, important, good stuff. The 45 mile per hour sign on the right. I can now see the two left turn indicators, bushes on the right. There's a car rolling past. I'll slow down to five miles per hour to be able to look around that curve to then take a left. And that's without any oncoming traffic immediately at that point. Okay? So that is on my dash. That is a driver's viewpoint as they were, as they were going for. Okay? I'll be quick. Let me do this. Let me, let me have others that come up to share, and we can talk more about sight distance and concerns, but I'd like you to hear from everyone. Okay? I'll be right back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is George Perry. I live at 4100 Ballard Woods Drive in the, in the neighborhood. I am not a city planner. I am not a traffic engineer. I am a resident, and I am a, a safety expert in the field of aviation. I am SMS qualified and have run safety programs for the United States Navy, for the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, and now currently in my role at UPS, I run the Safety Committee for the Independent Pilots Association. So while my expertise is not necessarily in traffic, I am very familiar with risk mitigation and things that are indicators that tell us that there are things that here that we should be concerned about. And one of the things in aviation, and you guys, I'm sure, familiar with the term near miss. The FAA and safety organizations such as ISBO and NTSB follow near misses. Why? Because they're an indicator of things that are likely to happen in the future. And anecdotally, I can tell you from personal experience that that intersection, because it is a blind corner in both directions, I have had, in fact, just two days ago, the intersection, as Erin mentioned, you have to slow down to clear the turn. I did. I was getting ready to turn left, and there was a vehicle traveling at a high rate of speed that I, I saw at the last second stopped. I look over and there was a policeman right there pulling out. And I'm like, and he goes, man, he, he shook his head. He, he knew exactly what had happened there. And I think he pulled out and went after that car for their rate of speed. So that's, that's the first. I want to talk about three things. That's the first thing. The indicators are there. They're clear. They're not just anecdotal. I think anyone in the neighborhood would attest that the blind corner represents a safety concern. Secondly, we've talked a lot about Kentucky regulations and, and highway safety design, but what we haven't talked about is the realities of what we see on the road, whether it's folks texting and driving, people exceeding the speed limit, crossing over the center line on corners. This happens regularly, especially in the rural parts of Oldham County. In this particular blind corner, because of the, the high elevation of the ditch, there are no, there are no off ramps. So if your reaction time is not adequate, there's nowhere for a driver to go. There's going to be either a head on collision or a rear end collision. So it's important that we consider what the code and the regulations are, but it's also important to consider the realistic way that people operate their vehicles. And then lastly, I think what's important to kind of walk you through why this is a, a concern. And first, it starts with the blind corner. As Erin mentioned, you have to almost stop in order to clear the road ahead of you to turn left across oncoming traffic. So when you stop, what you've now done is you've created a roadblock in a 55 mile per hour road without the required sightlines going back behind you. So I almost see it as, as sort of a trap. If I come to a complete stop before I turn left because I have to, to clear the road in front of me, people behind me that don't have sightlines to now see me are running up to 200, 300 feet before they see a car that stopped in the middle of the road. And more than, on more than one occasion, I've had vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed not see me until the last moment, and I'm waiting because there's oncoming traffic that I can't turn. And so now I'm stuck. I can't go left. I can't go right. And I'm just hoping that that person behind me hits the brakes in time. And I, and I'm here to tell you that more, probably three occasions in the last 12 months, I've had cars engage analog brakes to stop before, before hitting me. In one occasion, I actually saw him coming, and I just ignore, I, I forgot to turn, or I just forgot about turning, hit the gas and accelerated to open up that distance. I went down the road half a mile and then turned around. And so while the traffic volume is a consideration, while the rules and regulations and the code is a consideration, what should be your primary concern is the safety of the residents. And I can tell you that everyone that lives in that neighborhood, and your video did a great job, sees that left turn as a significant threat. And I know for, from personal experience, I view it with a very high level of caution in the best of conditions, never mind at night or in rain. And so with that, even though I'm not a, a traffic safety expert, as an aviation safety expert who spent the better part of 30 years managing and mitigating risks in the aviation environment, this, if, if we could apply this to an aviation area, I would do something significant to mitigate this risk. And I'm not saying that a turn lane is the solution. Okay? Could we knock down that embankment? Can we do other things to mitigate that risk? I'm not here to present you with a solution. I'm just here to validate the problem. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your, your, your consideration and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Sir, were you wanting to?
Good morning. My name is Larry Myers. I live at 3902 Ballard Woods Court. I spoke the last time about these issues that have gone into much more detail. I don't have the pictures, but you can see from Erin's pictures what I was talking about in the last meeting about cars coming from behind you, cars coming to you. There is absolutely no problem turning out of the subdivision. You can see when you come up our road, turn out onto 22. You don't have a real problem of coming westbound on 22. It's making that eastbound turn into the subdivision. And I noticed the applicant had pictures coming out of the subdivision where the traffic engineer, really, his pictures on the distance and all that, I think really shows it. And then with the pictures that Erin had showing when she was turning in and the truck was coming, if you, if you looked, you're right on that intersection before you can see the traffic coming from the other direction to make that turn. Now, if there's no cars there, you're fine, but you don't know it until the last second. And then you have people coming from behind you at 55 miles an hour. Now, I was local law enforcement for 32 years and dealt a lot with traffic. And I've been there for 12 years, living in that subdivision. And I'm very careful. I put my turn signal on probably 300 feet before I ever get there and start tapping the brakes because the people riding behind you are wanting to go through. And there's been many a time where I turn into the subdivision, and then you get the horns and the high five wave and all that because you've stopped their flow of traffic. And the other problem I have is maybe right now it's not a tremendous issue, but you're doubling the size of our subdivision with Section 5 of Ballard Woods. And the continued build from Ballard Glen is probably going to double over the years. So you're putting a lot more traffic, oncoming traffic for when you're trying to make that left turn lane. So anyway, I think the videos were probably a lot more informative than somebody rambling on. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, he hadn't been sworn.
Sir, were you sworn?
No.
No.
We'll need to swear. Are you in, please?
Okay.
You tell me to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Need your name and address.
Mike Rainey, 3913 Ballard Woods Drive.
I swear your last name.
R A I N E Y. Are we good?
Please proceed.
My wife and I have lived in the subdivision. First of all, starting with Larry, you're going to get the B team here. All the, all the younger guys that come out have given their testimony. Now you get the retirees because we're, we're not working. But before I repeat what has already been said, and I'll give my version of it, have any of you, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask a question of the commission, how many of you, or have any of you made that turn into our subdivision? Anybody, any one of you. You have. Two. I think if you were to make that turn, especially in the rain during a busy time in the morning or the afternoon, we wouldn't have to be up here talking to you. And then secondly, I don't know why we're even waiting until we're talking about, worrying about this with the new subdivision, new plat coming in. This left turn lane or some solution should have been there 10 years ago, 13 years ago. We've lived there 13 years. Walt built our house. He's a friend. And we've, we've been worried about this turn the whole time. When I come down to that turn, when Nancy comes down to the turn, that's my wife, we have to slow down. It's all been said about how we have to turn our turn signal on well advanced before we get there. The other thing is you have to actually go past the entrance to the subdivision ways to see around the curve while you're looking in your rearview mirror for some yahoo who hasn't seen your turn signal, especially in the rain and might rear injure. I have two examples of what, of recent examples of near misses.
The guy that lives near you, Cody, around the corner, is that his name?
The guy that lives near you, Cody, around the corner, is that his name?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Rainey is testifying. If he's going to ask somebody else, they're going to need to come up and testify.
I just need a name. Okay. All right. Guy, a guy that lives up in the upper part of the subdivision, we were talking about this not too long ago. And he said that he was coming down, he was slowing down to make the turn, and it was raining. And there was a truck behind him with a trailer. And he'd had his turn signal on well in advance, was making the turn. And the guy with the trailer put on his brakes and started fishtailing. Well, like the gentleman who just spoke, he opted instead of making the turn to go forward, to avoid the accident. I was making a turn and looking around the curve after pulling forward to, to see the oncoming traffic, and one of my neighbors was behind me. As I was turning, I saw a car in the distance. So I quickly made the turn. And by the way, we're making the turn blind because you're looking at the oncoming traffic, not where you're going into the, into the entrance. Our sub, our neighbor thought she had, apparently because I turned, thought she had the time to make the turn, and she turned behind me, realized that she was in trouble with the car coming. And as I turned into the right lane, she turned into the left lane by me. Now, if there'd been any cars coming up from the subdivision, it'd have been a head-on. It's just dangerous. And I don't know what it has to do with the new plat or reports, one way or the other. I'm telling you, that's a dangerous turn, and it has been from the get-go. It needs to be fixed. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gelford, did you have something additional?
I will quickly conclude. So the driver of a vehicle approaching an intersection should have an unobstructed view of the entire intersection. Okay? And sufficient lengths along the intersecting highway to prevent the driver to anticipate and avoid potential collisions. I hope what we've shown here today is that's not the case. Okay? That is our, that is, that, that is our point of discussion. Okay? You've talked about sight distances, sight distance stopping, and based on 45 miles per hour, that is 360 feet. Again, we're not meeting those requirements. You saw that white truck. I didn't have 360 feet or a football field. Think of it 120 yards. A football field length worth of distance to look at. Okay? So we, we have done this, and what Mr. Rainey was saying, carry coil. This is his testimony. I am going to go submit this on record. He was the gentleman that had the jack, jackknife trailer behind him. He was going to get hit, so he decided to move forward in that particular case. Okay? So he wanted to submit that on record, and I will do that again today. The traffic considerations is what you've seen is, as we, as we've discussed, is, is just not applicable in this case. What we would like to do is think about the growth. We have problems now. The additional growth will just worsen this, this condition, and it's doubling. We have 105 units today. This is 87 additional lots for Ballard Glen Section 5, as well as 44 additional lots of Ballard Glen 3 that have not been done. Okay? So this is an enormous expansion we're discussing, and we're already at, at our, at our threshold here of, of concern. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. concludes as part of the hearing. How's the commission holding up? Do we need to take a break? Are you ready to proceed? All right. We will proceed into questions from the commission unless I have anything else to cover. Any recommendations? All right. Mr. Douglas.
The first question is Mrs. Zimmerman. I believe at the last public, our planning commission hearing, you presented to the commissioners a traffic impact study that was dated and revised January 17, 2019, correct?
That is correct.
You have a copy in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Can you turn to page six? If you could go down to the paragraph where it begins, "All approaches of each intersection." But basically read the sentence that basically goes, "Therefore, no capacity." If you could just read that to us.
Therefore, let me step back to the mic. Therefore, no capacity improvements to the intersection are required.
Keep going.
If the intersection was a candidate for improvement, the manual suggests using a tool to evaluate the need for left turn lanes. Using the volumes in Figure 5, the warrant, and again, this is my misunderstanding of the word warrants here. The warrants for a left turn lane are satisfied at Ballard Vista Drive, both with the no build and no build volumes. The warrant is satisfied at Ballard Glen Parkway with the build volumes. The warrant charts are included in the appendix.
Okay. Page 34. Your chart for the left turn lanes?
Yes.
Can you explain why this tool was used and it says left turn lane warranted?
This is at the top of the page, the 2025 PM build conditions. And this chart is in there at the request of the Oldham County Traffic Engineer. I did not originally include this chart in, in the report, and it was added at, at a later date. And it is there to verify that if you use the tool, which is one of the criteria, that the volume is satisfied.
Which is the chart and the tool that this planning commission used in the decision of the binding element?
In my understanding, the, the word that is causing us the most grief is existing conditions, meaning the 2018 conditions.
Is that your understanding of what our concerns were?
Yes.
That's an assumption on your part?
That is, the word in the binding element is based on the existing conditions.
And you submitted to staff and to the planning commission a revised input?
It is not revised. That would, would have been the chart that would have been applicable on, in January from 28, using the 2018 existing condition data.
So you did a 2025 PM build on the warranting of this? That it was warranted based on when the lots or the development of the constructions or the plan, construction of the houses?
Is what, once, once it is all in place, yes.
And then new chart is what's existing?
Today. What is existing today, the existing condition, no, correct.
And did you provide that to the commission at the time when we were trying to prove the revised developmental plan?
No, they, they all, the conversation all centered on the 2025 conditions.
Exactly.
But the word in the binding element is existing conditions.
But you're not, you, you, you still avoided my question. My question was that you're providing this today, which was not allowed to us to make a determination of the approval of the revised developmental plan was presented to staff, correct?
Had it been, had it been asked or notified prior to the hearing, I would have had that chart available. I have my computer with me at every meeting and easily could have input the data from Figure 2 into that chart to show the difference between what's the existing situation, what happens in the no build, what, meaning the developments you've already approved, and then what happens once this development goes into place.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. My next question, I guess, will be to Mr. Silman, if the chairman is okay with it. I guess you had a outline of whatever Ms. Zimmerman put up, and then you had in red or blue?
Yes.
The answers. Could you bring that back up?
Yes.
I just had a clarification.
Certainly. Is that what you're asking for?
It is.
Okay.
And I believe there was another where Ms. Zimmerman discussed there, even though the level of service LOS is A and
Correct.
peak, I, I'm assuming now, I, I thought I heard in her testimony that both of them are A. But I believe in some document, it says the level of service at PM are B. So I'm not sure which one it is. I'm just, I didn't ask Ms. Zimmerman, but I just wanted to know if you knew any difference or if it's still level service A or still level service B in the PM?
I can look in the report and see. Give me a second.
But my question is that she stated that in determining any type of unsignalized intersection, that you just don't take one factor in consideration. Is that what you heard in her testimony?
That's correct.
So to mitigate the factors of a justification for a left turn lane, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So if we're sitting here today, I, I'm just trying to get a heads on the blueness. You said this is an unsignalized, singleized intersection. Do we take that in consideration? Or what are you, or what are you trying to tell us? Are there multiple factors mitigating? So just, I guess?
Right. So what was being said is there are multiple tools for evaluating the situation. The, what I was pointing out in the second bullet item there, the, the second arrowhead, was that when it discusses capacity analysis, which is the level of service A, B, C, E, F, it mentions that's a tool to be used for stop-controlled intersections. And this is not a stop-controlled intersection, so I would rely on other tools.
Okay. I think that answers my question.
All right. Is that all you have for now, Mr. Douglas?
It is for now. I may have one for Mr. Baxter later.
Mr. Hampton.
My question's for Mr. Van Zandt. Could we go back to the cost of the turn lane?
The commandeering of exhibit.
I'm really not questioning this number because you could put 60,000 up there, 6 million, and I wouldn't know the difference. I just wouldn't. How did you get these figures?
These are based on current bids. Well, let me break it down just a little bit.
So this has been bid?
No, no.
You said current bids.
On other projects. As far as unit prices, if you look at items 6, 7, and 8, those unit prices are, and number 5 as well, are based on other projects that I've been involved with. They're not numbers that I picked out of the air. Engineering, there's 35,000.
My question is, you got a, then you got a contingency of, what is that, 10% or something?
Yes, sir.
I'm not questioning that either. But giving what you have up there, it could be less or more.
That is correct. However, I, I believe this is a conservative estimate.
But you don't know that.
Yeah, based on experience and, and being a professional and having designed other turn lanes and being involved in construction, yes, this is a conservative estimate. I could have used some higher unit prices on this.
Okay. But this is not a bid. This is not based on that exact spot?
That's correct, because you would have to do
I know. I understand. I just want to make, I want to
Let me finish, please. In order to get a bid, you would have to do a set of plans. And that would take a lot of time and be a lot of money. And then you submit those plans to contractors and you get a bid.
I just wanted to be clear.
This is a preliminary cost estimate.
Thank you.
That's why it says estimate.
Mr. Hampton, anything additional? All right. Mr. Falvey?
Mr. Silman. Just to clarify, with your investigations as the county engineer, in an unsignalized intersection like this, you're saying it, it would be good to have a left turn signal?
It, it is, it's a tool that could be used to improve the condition, yes. So I've, I've observed, we've observed that there is an issue. Safety is a concern, and that would be one method to mitigate it.
And did you mention that when they gave testimony on all the regulations that they quoted, that it didn't pertain to a signal, it pertained to a signalized intersection, their testimony?
No.
So?
No, I, well, again, the tools just need to be applied appropriately. The, the charts that were used seem to be the appropriate tool as, as detailed in the KYTC. The charts that indicate the volumes in the 2025 build and no build condition.
All right.
Chairman, just as a, as a point of order, just so that we're clear. Mr. Falvey, I, I believe, and I want to be clear about the, are you asking about the regulations I referred to or the regulations that Ms. Zimmerman referred to, the crash rate and those things that?
Both.
Okay. I, I, I think Mr. Silman is referencing, he's saying that what Ms. Zimmerman testified to, he, he's referring to that. You're, you're not referring to the regulations I referred to, are you?
I don't remember the exact ones you were referring to.
Well, 7.2 and 5.3, what, those. I think there's just a disconnect on, on what Mr. Falvey's asking and what he's answering, and I want to make sure we're clear about that. But you're, you're, and your answer, and I don't want to put words in your mouth. I, I want you to clarify.
Well, my answer was that there, again, there are multiple tools. It appears that the capacity analysis was not one that was appropriate or, or applicable. The charts that were given by, in the, in the report by Ms. Zimmerman did appear to be an applicable method. And, and our observations were concerned with safety. That we, that we tried to detail in photographs.
And you weren't speaking to the regulations I referenced when I was giving my presentation? And, and I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying that you weren't in response to his
If you can pull those up and you can see.
You can go, when you have an opportunity to cross-examine in this case. He's just giving his testimony, and if you want clarification, you'll have your opportunity to do so.
I was going to say, I think you're answering, and tell me if this is correct or not, in relation to what's up on the screen.
Correct.
And is that what you're questioning about, are the?
Well, that, and I did mention their testimony. And I can ask them if it included unsignalized
Right.
intersections, your regulations. I can ask you specifically, Mr. Baxter, if you'd like.
So are you done with Mr. Silman? I don't want to cut him off.
That's fine.
So the, the regulations I, I reference are the Oldham County subdivision regulations. And I don't believe that anywhere in either the regulations, the one cited by Ms. Wall in her initial letter of January 22, or the roadway capacity standards, either one of those talk about signalized intersections. There may be in the, the, the regulation spoken about by Ms. Wall in Section 5, there is a series of types of roads referred to, stub roads, turn lanes. I, I can't remember all the things that are mentioned, and there may be something mentioned under that. But that was not what was referenced in her report, and that's not what I was referring to. As it relates to the, the, the question as to this design manual, which is going to be the same information that Ms. Zimmerman presented, she would be better served to speak about the, the question about whether or not this only applies to a signalized intersection or not.
Okay.
Okay? So if you want her to speak to that, certainly she can come up and do that.
I've got one other question for you, though, if you don't mind. You've presided in many of these meetings here, representing people. Haven't you seen binding elements added at these meetings before to existing binding meetings?
I, I have.
Or binding elements, I'm sorry.
I think, I, I think when we're talking about something that is this substantial, that, that, that it is typical that that comes out at the TRC. It is not, you know, the, the typical binding element that we talk about getting added is maybe somebody's going to, going to be required to put some screening in or put maybe somebody's gonna, gonna be required to put some screening in, or put maybe a fence in to, of some kind, to block something, but it is not usual, in my estimation, that an applicant is asked to spend $630,000 on something without there being some prior notice that that was going to be something that was going to be requested.
Well, the point of these meetings, when you bring an application in, is for evaluation, and that's when we make our recommendations, and that's when we do put additional binding elements on.
I, I understand that, and.
And at that meeting, and the minutes reflect that you all agreed to the binding elements.
Well, Mr. Falvey, I would disagree.
Okay. I'm just reading the binding element, or the minutes.
I understand, and if you would refer to, I have the transcript, and on page 88, in my closing statement, I believe it was page 88, I made reference in my closing statement that we agreed to the binding elements mentioned by Ms. Alvey in the staff report, there was four of them. After that, there was the discussion, and I, obviously you recall, because you were part of that discussion, there was a discussion between you and Mr. Urban about binding element number five. Binding element number five was not raised with us prior to the conclusion of the testimony, it wasn't, there was no request made of the applicant as whether, as to whether they would agree to binding element number five, and I specifically referred in the transcript to the four binding elements that were contained in the staff report, that we agreed to those binding elements.
So it wasn't agreed to by you all at that?
No, sir.
At that point?
No, sir, that would, and I think the transcript supports that.
Okay, so you, so to get, in order to get your zoning approved, that was a binding element?
I, well, it wasn't zoning, it was a revised preliminary development plan.
Okay.
So we weren't asking for a zone change, and again, I don't, I don't want to get into to rehash all of that, but, you know, it was a plan that was presented with no variances and no waivers. So, from our perspective, we were in complete compliance, and I believe staff agreed we were in complete compliance with the subdivision regulations and the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance, so we were entitled to get the revised preliminary development plan approved. There was no indication prior to the close of testimony, prior to my closing statement, that we were going to be asked to include binding element number five, and that's the reason that we are here today, because, again, we take the position, we didn't have any prior notice of it, and it did, and it came up at the hearing, you know, we had information from KYTC that indicated that it was not necessary, they weren't going to require it, they didn't think it was necessary, and then we get to the hearing, and Ms. Wall presents her January 22nd report that day, which we had not seen before that day.
But you did approve the motion to approve the subdivision?
Sir, I don't have any basis to give approval or disapproval on behalf of a client, I wasn't asked, I can't, I made my closing statement, I asked you all to approve our revised preliminary development plan as submitted, including the four binding elements that were included in the staff report, and that was the last thing that was asked of me, and thereafter, then you all went into discussion to discuss what to do, and there was a motion made where that binding element was added as one of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mr. Falvey, is that all you have?
I have one other question for Ms. Wall's representative, I'm sorry, I don't.
How many?
And basically, Ms. Wall, in the statement you read, she said the left-turn signal is warranted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it warranted under?
Lane, the lane.
Left turn lane.
Right.
Is warranted.
Is warranted under 2025 no build and build conditions.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Davis?
Can't get the mic.
Push it to that microphone, please.
Yes, ma'am. They're not connected at this point, though. Well, that's what, that's what is on the plan, yes, ma'am, but, and so, in fact, and I know you were here on January 22nd, there was actually some confusion when the motion was made about whether or not there was going to be turn lanes required at a subdivision that was not before you, which is Ballard Glen, and that was part, that was some of the confusion that went on during the course of the discussion after the conclusion of the evidence in the case.
So is it, it's your expectation that people are going to use the Ballard Woods entrance instead of the Ballard Glen entrance for these new 87 homes?
Well, this is, at this point, it is named Ballard Woods, Section 5, so I don't know that I'm qualified to speak to that, Ms. Zimmerman or Mr. Vanzan may be able to, about what your expectation would be about how many of those people are going to use that entrance versus Ballard Glen.
The traffic, entering traffic from the new section, it was divided between the two entrances, based on the location of those lots and the time travel from the, where it will connect to the existing subdivisions. So not all of the new traffic will use Ballard Vista Drive?
So in the, all of the 87 homes would not impact Ballard Woods?
Correct.
Because they probably would use the other entrance, some of them would, they would not all go through Ballard Woods?
That is correct, and actually, I estimated that more of the new traffic will use Ballard Glen Parkway than would use Ballard Vista Drive into Ballard Woods.
Okay, so there would be less impact on Ballard Woods?
Correct.
Thank you.
All you have, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
I believe I'll direct this toward, for Mr. Baxter. In your statements, you said that we are considering this as only the amount of traffic that's added into the new section of Ballard whatever?
Yes, sir.
Correct, so.
Well, I think I understand, in my, in the presentation I made?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So, if a developer has a large enough block of property, and he adds sections to this over a long period of time, does this ever reach the point of having a traffic impact? If only, if all is being considered is what is being added on that particular day?
Are you referencing a traffic impact study, or are you saying that would there be a traffic impact?
A traffic impact?
I, I think anytime you add a house to a, anywhere, there's going to be some traffic impact, for sure. I think the question that I'm raising, and is that the way that the ordinance or the regulation is written, it uses the word "or," and you have a certain threshold that is triggered by virtue of that word "or," if you don't get over that threshold in a new or in an added section, then, then these mitigation factors are not required. The other component of that is, is that's why we demonstrated to you that there's been a number of other situations where there was more than 1,000 ADT, and you all did not require a left turn lane in those situations. So, we're somewhat confused as to why, in this particular situation, there's a requirement, especially in light of the fact that there's been testimony, not only from our side, but from staff today, that in the 2018 scenario, that there is no reason to have a left turn lane, and in the, in the binding element, it says there is an existing basis, the existing conditions require that there be a turn lane constructed now, and therefore, we have to do it before we record the first record plat.
So you're stating at this point in time, traffic studies show that there is not an existing condition that requires a left turn lane?
I think that is correct, I think Ms. Zimmerman testified to that, and ma'am, I'm going to apologize to you, I don't, you are, Ms. Wall's surrogate, I guess for lack of a better term, I apologize, I butcher your name if I, if I could, so I'm not going to even try, okay? But she, she just testified, she just said that in the, in the 2025 build, and I think you said the no build as well, there would be a left turn lane warranted, but as the existing condition in 2018, there is no requirement that there be a turn lane.
And these stated requirements were based strictly on traffic counts?
I didn't do that, so I wouldn't want to speak to that, certainly you can ask Ms. Zimmerman that question.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes, that was a traffic count made in May of 2018 at that intersection.
So it takes in no other considerations?
It is the volume criteria only.
Okay, thank you. The, Mr. Baxter, please, the examples given for the number of approvals made by planning and zoning for areas that had over 1,000 trips per day, I believe, were mostly given for years, I think all but two were given for years that were prior to 2017, maybe, most of them 2006. Regulations change over time, don't they, sir?
Yes, sir, but actually, in fairness, these regulations existed, you all amended the subdivision regulations, I believe, in 2007, but the regulations that we're referring to were in existence in the prior, prior regulations, so they were carried forward. So, they would be applied the same, it's the same regulations you had before the amendment in 2007 and what you have today.
So in your view, we are comparing apples to apples?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Finney? Mr. Douglas? I was going to sit down, but I wait.
Get my mic to work. If you could go back to your slide, where you're making a justification to remove the binding elements? That binding element, mainly just the, the two justifications, I guess you're making the justification, or the explanation, one being, I believe it was, and I don't have it in front of me, has to do with, you didn't have the opportunity, or the applicant didn't have the opportunity to object to binding element five?
Yes, sir.
So if you could find that?
I said, I think I said it more than once.
You did say it more than once, and you've said it that you had no, the applicant or you made no objection to binding element one through four, and that you indicated you didn't have time to make an objection, or you didn't make an objection to binding element number five?
Correct.
What precluded you from not making that objection at the hearing in January?
Because the, our portion of the hearing was concluded, it was, it was during your all's portion, I don't have authority to stand up in the middle of the commissioner's discussion and the making of a motion, and interject myself into the proceeding at that point.
And anytime at that hearing, at the end, when the binding elements were being presented and added, it generally, I've always witnessed, and I, and I've kind of reviewed this in this tape, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but generally, you're sitting there, or if there's opposing of any element, you've occasionally have raised and said, "Well, we don't object to those binding elements," when it's discussed, and you look either at the applicant or whoever the developer is, generally. So, have you reviewed the tape to see that?
I've read the transcript, and.
You read the transcript, did you review the tape on your reaction?
And let me respond. Mr. Douglas, it has also been my experience, and, and I don't want to, obviously Chairman Jeffries was here that day, he is not here today, and so I certainly have no issue with him, but I, but it is normally my experience with him, that he asked me, "Do you accept those binding elements?" And the transcript will demonstrate that we were not asked at that point. It was, so, obviously, I'm not in a position, once you all, once I've concluded, and the evidence is closed, and you all then have an opportunity to discuss things, proof is closed, and my portion is closed, I'm not in a position to interject myself, because quite frankly, I'd probably do it all the time, which you all would find somewhat annoying. But nonetheless, I'm normally asked, or the applicant is normally asked, and we were not asked, and the transcript will clearly demonstrate that we were not asked.
Okay, and then my next question is that, the second objection to the binding element is because the left turn lane is not warranted on the existing conditions, existing, correct?
Correct.
That's what Ms. Zimmerman testified.
Which is what the binding element says.
Right, so it's that word "existing."
Well, that word "existing" creates a big part of the problem, yes, sir.
Because?
And it's, and it goes on to further state that the turn lane has to be in place before record plat, so if you were to strike the word "existing," we still have the issue that it's before the record plat.
So, there's two words, or two formation of those sentences, correct?
Well, if you want to give me an example of a formation of the sentence.
No, I'm not going to give you an example, because I'm not going to, I don't think that's my statement to do that here, at this point.
Okay.
But, my question to you is that your testimony and Ms. Zimmerman's, your presentation, Ms. Zimmerman's testimony, is the words "existing" and under the recording of the first plat?
Yes, sir.
There's no preclusion to, from her standpoint, from her analysis, that it's warranted under the 2025 build-out? Correct?
Her testimony is that based upon the evaluation that she performed, that one of the criteria shows that there would, that the turn lane could be necessary in 2025, yes, sir.
Could, I don't see "could" in there.
Well, I think under one chart, she also said there's additional criteria used to make that evaluation.
Correct.
And, and those are the other criteria that indicate no mitigation is necessary.
Correct, and she also stated not one mitigating factor is used in all of this?
Well.
Other mitigating, in other words, we don't take, the state didn't take just one, maybe factor involved, I believe she stated.
I think the primary two that she testified to were ADT.
Correct.
Okay, and the other, the other was safety, and safety was determined based upon crash rate at that intersection, which is one crash over a period of time, giving you that small number, and the state would not consider that to be high enough to require something to be done at this intersection.
Correct, and I'll fall back to the date in January, when this was proposed for the revised preliminary subdivision plan. There was a lot, there was discussion about traffic going through that area, opening up to Ballard Glen, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there was discussion about construction vehicles and construction trucks coming off of 22, coming into that entrance, correct?
Yes.
And what was the concerns that residents had over, I mean, you, you read the transcripts?
I did read the transcript, you know, I can't tell you specifically what they were, but they're contained.
They were concerned, correct?
Sure.
For safety, okay, that's all I have, thank you, appreciate it.
Is that all you have, Mr. Douglas? All right, for the commission, we have run out of time. I believe there are a couple more questions, and if we're going to pursue those, then we'll need to allow for some additional time. Can we have a motion for an additional 10 minutes?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? All right, voice vote, all in favors, please signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign. Mr. Falvey?
I guess it's for Ms. Zimmerman. But what was presented in that January meeting was this chart that said the turn signal was warranted, is that still correct for 2025?
Lane, it's not.
I can't, I'm sorry, lane, excuse me.
The language on that chart uses the word "warrant."
Okay.
The reading of the transportation cabinet's design manual would, no longer uses the word "warrant." It says, as one of the criteria, it's a, does, is there enough volume at this location that a left-turn lane might provide value? And the answer to that question is, in 2025, the answer is yes.
Yes.
The question, you know, we go back to the definition in the book, it says, "There is no such thing as a warrant for a left-turn lane." You can't say, it's only one thing. You can't say, it's only one thing, there's only one reason that you would build a left turn lane.
What's the other word they're using for warrant now, then?
Aid in evaluation.
Okay.
So it's an evaluation of whether or not those volumes might provide value.
Okay. Thank you. And then a, a question, and maybe this is for Mr. Combs. If this, if the binding element is not accepted, then is the zoning legal? Or would they have to go back and?
Keep using inappropriate terms. Zoning isn't what we're talking about. It was a preliminary subdivision.
Right.
Revised, rather, so.
The revised subdivision plan, would that still, if they're, don't want the binding element, which was part of it, then the zoning would not be adequate either then, right?
I can't answer that, no. Still, I can only answer the one part on the binding element.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
I wasn't, I wasn't here during the first. I'm trying to get familiar with this transcript. It looks to me that what I'm looking at, some of the testimony from staff is discussing this, uh, left turn lane, uh, within the staff original testimony. When I came here today looking at this, I thought it was not involved in the staff discussions, and therefore, the, uh, petitioner was not properly, did not have due process, was not properly informed of the proceeding. That's a legal question, just being, but now, today, they are addressing it again, and I think it's before this body to decide whether or not that binding element should be in place, uh, with respect to element, binding element five. Um, and I don't want to get into what another court might say about it, but I'm thinking that it's, due process is taking place today, in my opinion. Now, your question about this binding element, um, and it was discussed in the motion that was made, and whether, um, counsel for the petitioner, Mr. Baxter, understood it or not, or chose not to object to it or not, I'm, I'm not going to respond to that at this point. But I think the issue is before the body today to decide whether or not that binding element should be there as opposed to being removed. I think it's already there, but it's, one side's asking to remove it if you approved it, and now you're being asked to reconsider it. So that's what you're, that's what you have to do today. And that's the only way I can explain it. And, uh, and you have to listen to the testimony of both sides, the expert testimony from, uh, the, the engineer, engineers and the, and the residents and the opposition. So that's, and your all's be the wick. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Smith?
When you spoke with Mr. Finney, excuse me, about the traffic count?
Yes.
Did I misunderstand? Did you say there hadn't been a traffic count since, like, the middle of twenty-eighteen?
The traffic impact study is based on a traffic count that was made in May of twenty-eighteen. Thank you.
All you have?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Diane, I'm sorry, stay up there. So you earlier had a copy of your traffic impact study dated December twenty-fourth, uh, twenty-eighteen, revised on January tenth, twenty-nineteen, right?
Um, it's been revised January twen, seventeenth. It's the latest version.
Okay. Well, the one I have, unfortunately, and so tell me.
I have the twenty-ten, I mean, the January tenth. Go ahead.
This, all of this argument in my mind seems to hinge on the binding element using the term, existing. So on page thirty-two in that twenty-ten, and I'm, and if it's on a different page or non-existing in the twenty, in the January seventeenth, let me know.
Right.
And that this, uh, page thirty-two in that document is the PM twenty-twenty-five no build, and it does say left turn warrants, and we keep using the word warrants, but now we're being told that doesn't count warrants, but that's the terminology on here.
Correct.
This chart says, left turn lane warrants. It said, left turn lane, in big words, warranted for the twenty-twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five no build. Can you explain what the no build scenario is?
Right. The no build scenario is the twenty-eighteen count.
I have a slide. Action. So can I, can I use the word, existing?
No, you cannot use the word, existing.
In twenty-eighteen? Okay, thanks. All right. Stand corrected, then, obviously. I'm not sure why, uh.
The word, the word, existing, it refers to the twenty-eighteen condition, and it is in figure two, uh, on page three.
Okay.
So the twenty-twenty-five no build would be the twenty-twenty-five no build situation, and not the twenty, not the existing condition.
But twenty-eighteen is what, then?
The existing conditions.
Okay, so, so get it. So again, you're hinging, a lot of your argument on my using the term, existing, and I'm asking what the, uh, twenty-twenty-five with the no build. So it.
All right.
Takes the twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, um.
Counts.
Counts. So here's what's in the twenty-twenty-five no build data. The blue at the bottom is the twenty-eighteen counts that were actually made, the teal color.
Mm-hmm.
There is a growth rate that takes twenty-eighteen to the year twenty-twenty-five, and that is the red number, and that, for this location was, uh, the conservative growth rate was one percent. The transportation cabinet points out that Kentucky twenty-two has been experiencing zero to negative growth over the past ten years. So maybe the red number happens, maybe the red number doesn't happen. And then the green is the fifty-seven lots that are already approved in Ballard Glen subdivision, and the fourteen remaining lots in Ballard Woods. So that is, all, all of those things are assumed to be in place by the year twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so my line of questioning relates again to the use of the word, existing, and then the growth that would happen from approved without considering Ballard Woods Section Five traffic, and it's, and it's warranted. That's where I came up with the word, existing, and I, I apologize if that was wrong, but that was what was in my head. The, the, this chart says it's warranted.
It meets the volume criteria, or it meets the volume warrant.
Right.
It does not mean you must build a left turn lane if you have these volumes.
Okay, and that's where.
So let's be very careful about understanding, even in that situation, what the word warrant means.
Understand that you said that it, that doesn't mean that it must be built, that, but the commission chose to require it to be built. And that's the premise of binding element number five. That's the end of my questioning. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Further questions from the commission? It will take a ten-minute recess before we move into the next section of the hearing. We'll move into rebuttal next, yes, sir.
The commission needs to hear and understand that.